Hello?
What's up?
Hamzki! Hi, I got your letter that I'll let you know about... Here!
Thank you.
If you want privacy... Yes! So... Um... Sorry, my head's really scattered right now, so... Damn, I drank it all, I can text it again. But, um... If you want privacy to read it, you can and stuff, I won't burden you right now.
Alright, go inside if you're afraid of something.
And I'm not afraid, I just... It's pain. Oh, hi, Doris!
Hi, hi! Are you doing okay?
I... I...
Hello, Hamzki.
What's up, sitting next to my favorite cow?
Oh, is that Daisy or is that Stacy? Which one is the two?
I don't know. To be honest, it just sleeps there, I think it's dead.
Oh.
Hold on, I have a letter I need to read.
No, that is fine. Do you want me to leave you a bit? I leave you a bit?
Um, for now, I'll get up in a second.
Okay, I'll leave you now, I'll leave you for now.
You have some brat on your back. Dear Hamzki, You might find it strange that I decided to write you of all people a letter. I'm not so sure myself. Maybe you're fresh in my mind after building that shield generator for you and the meat rack. For a long time, I only really knew you as Gormander's friend. Yeah, they've grown to see you as much more. Funny enough, I think the turning point was when you tried to cheat against me during the High Hall Tournament and somehow still lost. I guess I thought it was a very bold move to try that. I do find it impressive... First of all, motherfucker, I was teaching a lesson, I didn't want the fucking job. I guess I thought it was very bold. I do find it impressive how much you've managed to grow the meat rack in what feels like a short time. To be honest, I'm struggling to find the words to write here, but I don't want to throw away the letter because I want to at least send something. Suppose I sh... I wish I could have talked with you more, gone to the meat rack for once and seen what you've done. I'd like to think we could have bonded over the complicated relationships we have with Gormander now. I don't know if I'll ever get that chance now, but it's the thought that counts, right? Sincerely, Leon Luzzi. A golden sunflower? Yo, I added an Uber Eats... ...logo? 'Cause I think during the 24-hour Meat Rack Lobby on Sunday, I'm just gonna have the meat rack sponsored by Uber Eats. I wanna see if anyone joins that server. What the fuck? Did my connection drop? Was that VR chat or me?
It's happening again!
Did everyone reconnect? Oh no, so much for the council meeting.
It's a problem, it's a problem. I'm in, I'm in Britain, I'm having issues with VR chat. I've got news for you.
I too am in Britain.
What the fuck are you doing?
Yeah, yeah.
Let's go in. Wait, shut up. Deck you, I'll deck you if it's a state.
You would deck me?
Yeah, you got your problem.
What the fuck were you doing? I'm not gonna answer that.
You have to find out character, motherfucker.
No, I don't want to.
She's not going to recognize me! No, she's not gonna recognize me! She's not gonna recognize me!
Well, which one are you?
I met before. I believe it was with that fish.
Fish? Are you...
Mm.
Sorry, I'm very bad with all your names. You're a rat. Yeah, I remember you. I'm extremely blunt, you attacked someone?
They attacked me.
They attacked you. Why would they attack you?
'Cause I'm different, maybe, I don't know. They fear humans and alike. Are you okay?
I'm just trying to figure out who to believe.
Unfortunately, we live in caves and... Back and forth, nor do I care what people think.
So you transform into some weird motherfucking thing?
Didn't transform, my life stepped away and had... Something of an old... Hmm, maybe in my place.
Old. How are you guys pro-human when you're not even human?
We're built in their image, your image.
What are your insides made of?
Stone.
Did you find your sister or whoever?
No, there's someone in this fair city.
Alright, I have a meeting to get to. They're saying Athena attacked them first. And I am...
Yeah, it sounds like it.
Willing to believe it.
It sounds... Yeah, I could believe it too after the fact that you were threatened to be turned into a tree or something.
Hold on, what?
Most... Sorry, didn't mean to bump into you.
No, and you wasn't turning into a tree. You were stupid.
Hello?
Hi, sorry. So they might have... Athena would not defend me like that. And attack them.
She was pretty riled up. You might not believe it, but she's gotten a lot better.
Uh-huh, okay, come here. Come with me real quick. Over here. Right here, I don't want anyone to see my back 'cause it's full of scars and... So I'm just gonna keep it like this. She shocked my chest, I was paralyzed almost... In the street, in Orlando.
Why?
'Cause I said she was... She'd be nothing without her abilities. And she chased me down. For a while, she could have killed me.
I'm getting really fucking close to being done with defending people. People I think are getting better and they're not. Sick and tired of it all.
Same, I... Same.
I don't even know how to defend Trinidad right now off the top of my head. I have a general idea that he wasn't himself, I have a kind of an idea that... He let his other side, I guess, maybe take a hold and that's why he put a bunch of those lives in danger.
To be fair, I think I'm... Way beyond defending Trinidad right now.
Don't get me wrong, Trinidad's always been stupid, right? Yeah, he's always been stupid, at one point I had to explain to him the intricacies of letting millions of people die, or his daughter at the time, I guess. It was the first time I met him too. I don't know, why always I'm sick and tired of it? I think that she's getting better, Athena. She seems like she is, that's why I got the job at the damn cafe anyways. Money, part of it, but secondly is... Because, so I can keep an eye on her and Calypso. And she's having growing pains, both of them are, and her even more so, she doesn't see Sachi as a father. She sees Sachi as, you know, something else. Someone she wants to meddle in her life, or some shit like that.
That's what a father does.
I'm trying to... You know... Sure. She wants what Calypso, the attention that Calypso gets. She wants some of that fatherly love and affection that Annie gets. She doesn't get any of that, she just constantly has to prove herself or... Something like that. I don't think tasing people in the middle of the street's a great idea, but... I don't know.
It wasn't just tasing, they held their hands on my chest for like three seconds while it was full-on shocking me and I collapsed.
I'm trying to figure out how to explain to Athena why it's a good idea for her to go around and apologize to people.
I defend her...
I'm hoping the twins will be able to help out.
I defend her to the point where everyone probably thinks I'm... A villain. Because...
Oh yeah, me too, I get that, a lot.
I think what she did was necessary, but a risk. Uh-oh. Uh-oh. Rist, rustin' pepperonis. VR chat being funky right when we're about to do something.
Hopefully you're still here.
Alright, here's, we'll just continue the scene right here.
Right.
Oh hey, at least you got, at least you got lagged at the same time I did, then it would be...
I didn't experience the slap 'cause I fluxed for a second there.
What the fuck, there's a frog in your ass?
What the fuck? Damn.
Quickly, before we reset again. Thank you, look at that. Where were we?
I don't know, something-something. Electric fish.
Fucking tried to kill me, defend her, I'm a fucking... I'm a monster, 'cause I defend her, because she blew up the waterfront when we were at war for eight months.
Yeah, I... I... I feel like I have a good read on people, I don't think Athena is a bad person, I just think that she's misguided, you know what I mean?
I think deep down she is actually irrational and rash. And it's part of her being... I don't think anyone's guiding her in any way, and if someone is trying to guide her, she's not listening.
I think that the only person that can guide her is Calypso. But they need to start talking and need to understand each other, and they need to figure out how they are going to coexist. Because this can't continue on where Athena is going to call all the shots and tase people.
Because they're gonna be permanently locked in private conversations, here's the USB stick of all of the scans and the footage I took underneath in Dragon's Spire. As well as any documentation I could find about... Well, cores and living monuments, similar to how my grandmother is our continent, that place is made up of living things, so... Yep, anything I could find is on that.
This is a regular USB drive?
It has a couple of different functions into it.
Text fire and then smoke a little bit.
Let me, let me see.
As it electrocutes.
Yeah, it's real.
I thought you were old school, that's why I gave you an old school one, do you want me to just email it to you or airdrop it? Or give it to you on a something else?
Neither of those... If you can, can you just send them to Rogue and have Rogue break down the data for me and send it to me?
Or carry a pigeon.
Um, via text or something? Or yeah, or carry a pigeon, this happens every little, like every few hundred years or so, where tech like this just, I'm s- I'm sorry for breaking it by the way, um, will just break on me.
Well, someone said you were old school, so I gave you an old school device.
This, I...
That's like as old school as I can get.
Probably like... World War II era, most likely.
Roll up a tiny piece of note, tie it to a bird's foot.
You realize that it would probably be a hundred thousand floppy disks or something like that?
I would rather not have 100,000 floppy disks, so instead can you...
Can you take a... Can you dis- will you destroy a tablet, like a 24-22 tablet?
Uh, sometimes they break, sometimes they don't.
The fuck is wrong with you? Respectfully.
It's, it's the magic in, the magic in my body is really hostile to technology. Especially like this, here, I'll give you this back, even though it's... Broken, but it'll make me feel better if I go back.
Isn't that technology?
No, no, this is steam-powered. Blaze made it.
You're a fucking boomer. Oh, Blaze. That's pretty cool.
Alright, I'll just send it to Rogue to say, "How do you even get to things?"
Uh, I have a data pad that kind of works sometimes, so I'll use that. Uh, I wish, I wish I had a horse.
You don't have a horse?
No, I do not, I do back on my farm, but they're workhorses, and I haven't been back there in about a year now.
Uh, there probably wouldn't be a safe place to keep a horse at Dragon's Spire anywhere.
No, no. It's part of the reason why I, uh, I'm buying a house in Orlando, Saka, is because they're pretty friendly to most anything, so I shouldn't like break down buses there.
Aren't you afraid of Pokemon blowing up your house?
Hmm, I mean, it's, so, so like, for evidence of fear, I would have to worry about scrappers or... I don't know what that is. What is that?
It's a Pokemon horse.
Doesn't matter, they have large Pokemon called Kaiju there, and they will just... When you're sleeping.
Nah, fear also has large Kaiju and they're called corporations.
Oh, that's... Yeah, that's scary, but not as scary as a Kaiju stepping on your house.
Boom, that's a lie.
Well, like, the idea is, is like, it's like, I could be in Zephira, sure, um, but then I have to worry about scrappers and other things like that, um, and like... Being shot, which is ironically probably the most dangerous thing for me, is being shot with bullets. Um, Zephira is, or at least... Yeah. Um... Anyways, I just, I, I got, I found a nice place, so, and I got done all that paperwork last night, just taking a little bit...
I'm gonna buy Randall Poynter for her birthday.
Maybe I'll move through Orlando, fucker.
Uh, we have the same birthday, so... We, and also the thing is, we don't exactly remember, so sometimes it's October 8th is what we've compromised on, October 8th, and, uh, some years, we try to alternate. Yeah. Um, to be fair, we were kinda busy at the time, um, and, um, November 25th is usually the days we alternate on. This year it was October 8th.
By the way, I...
Okay.
Oh, hold on, fuck. Think I'm being sponsored by Uber Eats.
Yeah?
Um...
What'd you do?
That's good.
Oh yeah, I left the CEO on fucking Red, whatever, for a very long time. I forgot. One sec, I'm gonna go deal with that. Uber Eats wants to sponsor me, or I want to sponsor them, it's a mutual thing. How much do you think that's worth, like 600,000 credits? 500,000 credits? The way you look at me reminds me of Sakoda. 600,000 buttons? 200, you ha- you're a dragon, you hoard things, right? You know money, you know value, you know what? Bang is worth a buck, or bu- buck, bu- whatever. Why are you constantly sleeping now? You're sleeping everywhere I see you. Don't glare at me. I don't know what you're saying. Oh my god, I'm s- I'm sorry, I'm probably annoying you right now and... I'm saying, 300K. I'm gonna go as high as possible, and then immediately he'll be like, "What? No." 500K for this sponsorship. I will... Be bringing you at least $6 worth of customers. Did I take over your den, I'm sorry? What are you looking at? I'm typing on my phone. Nope, don't touch my phone. You, aw, you fucking deleted it! God damn it. One-time deal, no streams, oh god, the CEO's responding. Now my outrageous... N- request will be... Now my outrageous request will be lowered when he says, "What the fuck, that's a lot of money." And if he doesn't negotiate, he's, I'm gonna be like, "Oh fuck, I should've been going higher." Could've said 1 million credits, but this is a corporation. Small corporation, maybe a local business. Me and Jasmine were their best customers. Girlfriend. And I were... I'm not even typing. I'm typing into this part of the phone instead of this part of the phone. This is, oh my god. Half! Fucking, I'm gonna say 300, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say 350,000. He says, "I can do half of that, Mr. Hamsky. If there are good results after Sunday, we can bump it to an overall 300K." Motherfucker, I'm going 450K right now, 400K. I'm going 400K for the negotiation. And I'm pushing the fact that we were their bus, best customers. There, my girlfriend and I were your best customers. We believed in your business, 400K. He's just saying an overall 300K, so I'm raising it to see if he'll budge. This is called business. Also, if he gets pissed off, I have ruined the entire deal, but it won't really matter. I just won't have to do as much work. I'm taking a risk. If you don't take a risk, you lose everything. I'm sure you know, you probably stolen some buttons from people that chased you. 350K, take it or leave it. That's higher than his overall. See, easy money. One-time deal. You have a one-time deal. Mr. C E O. What kind of name even is that? Oh shit. I have 15 minutes before I have to leave. I'm going to a business meeting, but like full of terrifying people. If I die... Rest in peace. I'll, I'll make sure everyone knows that I was last seen with you. 350K, man, I just made money. Do you, you, you actually talk to people, right? Do you keep secrets? No, you don't. I can't trust you. Psst, I'm gonna use some of that money to crush some people. Have you ever had someone come into your den and threaten you? I'm gonna make sure they don't come into my den. Can I come to your den and steal some stuff? Do you have coins? Do you have it, then? Where is it? Is it at Dragon's Spire? It is? Are you... In the basement? It's in a mountain. On the outside. You're in a room? Your den is a room? Why don't you have a cave? Like a, a tomb in a pyramid? I don't know what that means. It's too big for you? Uh, someone will break in? Someone will break in, you're afraid? Hold on, sorry. People in finance will send you a contract. Of course, it's only the one time, but just so both of us have it in writing, "Thank you for the exciting business offer, and I hope everything goes well." There's 300K in, in the coffers, and 50K for me cuz I'm gonna fucking put a hit out on someone. Alright, I gotta, I'm gonna wander around and I'm gonna insult some people, and then I'm gonna laugh, and then I'm gonna walk out of here. So it was good talking to you.
This stuff ain't, uh, it's really cool though. I don't blame you.
I mean, I've seen them written as sort of cautionary tales on how things, but then again, considering a certain city nearby is basically the definition of that.
What, I, I'm not bald headed. It's more tempting to rupture someone's bald head for good luck.
Oh, does that work?
Yeah. If it's shiny enough, you can see into your future.
It's like a crystal ball, obnoggin'.
You're bald?
Oh no, I was climbing a mountain the other day. Oh god, this actually hurts.
Ah, fuck. Oh god.
You can climb more, you can do anything, but if you can't, climb back down. I have a business plan or idea for you.
Uh-huh.
You pay me, and I'll send a bunch of people to the Acres.
I pay you? You want me to pay you to send people?
I will, I will advertise the shit.
Listen, people end up in the Acres for less.
I'm not talking about dead people.
People end up in the Acres.
I'm talking about on Sunday, I'm doing
I hope not.
From at least the casino till the onsen, I am gonna be wide awake and trying to run an entire business the whole day, and I want to send people your way.
Do you like hurting yourself? What's going on? Why do you not like?
Actually, I remember this, I climbed a mountain the other day, and I just climbed that ladder and it hurt really bad, and I never want to do it again.
Your arms are gonna like you for that, you're gonna...
Hey, I'll give you, hey, I got you, I'll give you, I'll give you a massage, here we go, here, not a massage, here we go.
Careful, I had back surgery.
It'll, 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 huh?
How many people am I expecting?
Okay, I won't, I won't touch it then, it's fine. How many people, I'm not entirely sure.
Is this like a bar crawl?
I think the beginning is gonna be a bar crawl cuz I'm gonna immediately go from the casino and probably be drunk. And then from like, from like 3am to 4pm until business hours at the meat bank, there's a massive open space, and then everything's all out in the open from that room.
Okay, well, so what, how much would you want to give the tavern and the Acres business? I could give you some of the income that we make from that day. The people buy. I mean, if you sent them, then yeah. And I can give you some barrels of, of onisake as well. No, it'll fuck them up. Listen, a couple cups of that puts me on my ass. 8am.
Oh shit, I got 7 minutes to get to Zephira. I gotta get that.
7 minutes to Zephira?
Sorry, 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 sorry. Oh shit, I'm so sorry. I gotta get to Zephira. I gotta go to fucking Zephira City Council.
I know, I heard the meeting's today.
Why, what do you mean? I gotta go though, for real. Oh my fucking god, don't stress me out, they stressed me out enough.
Pasty, you're here telling police about all this stuff, and she has no idea what you're talking about. Like, I don't know what Uber Eats is, I don't know about this currency you're talking about, but you say more is always better, so go for it.
Okay, I gotta go.
I don't know what you're talking, go.
I need to write that down, plus, oh god, I have to pee.